All seeing, all hearing, all understanding God, the God of creation, forgive our life, God and Father, our Lord Jesus Christ. Father God, as again as a few of your hand made service. But you allow your angels to watch your world being known today. For God, would you thank you again for your laws to come back to a disappointed place, to handle these and fail for this city, Father God? God, when we do it from our heart, and where you look at our heart, let us look at our citizen heart and look at us, the fails of the city from our hearts. We just thank you, God, because you is the almighty and wise God. You know everything. And Father God, we ask you that you please forgive us of our sins and continue to bless the mayor, Father God, and this board, and every department here and every sick employee, God. And we do thank pleasing to you, not to ourselves. But we thank you for the privilege that you give us, to be able to serve. We thank you for what you all allowed us to achieve and the faith that you got in the making. We pray, God, that you would just bless us to come to the end, to the finish line, and see for something that is well done. And God, at the end of it, we will look to you and give you all the praise and honor and glory, just because you God and by yourself you God. And you leave no help from none of us to be God. It's in Jesus' name and prayer. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here this evening. Our first order of business will be approval of the official agenda with consented items. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Alderman Warland?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Sistrunk?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Skinner?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am, thank you.
No, ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, thank you, ma'am.
All right, if not, if I could get a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items.
Some of the, not everybody talking about this thing. Alderman Sistrunk, I have a motion. Do I have a second one? I see Alderman, I see Alderman Brooks, so. All right, I have a motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, I will read the consented agenda items and, um, let's see, yes. First, first is consideration of the minutes of the July the 11th, 2025 work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Then we have consideration of the minutes of the July 15, 2025 recess meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Then under mayor's business, we've got consideration of revising the lease agreement with October Hall County Humane Society to reflect the mutual change in the date of the completion of the new construction of May 1, 2025 end date. B is consideration of reallocating the residential and commercial land fees effective October 1, 2025 by reducing the residential land fee from $1.50 to $0.50, with the remaining $1 to be incorporated into the regular residential sanitation fee, increasing it from 1950 to 2050 monthly. And similarly, for commercial accounts, the land fee would be adjusted from $5 to $2, with the remaining $3 to be added to the regular commercial sanitation fee, raising it from $25 to $28 monthly. C is consideration of the resolutions authorizing the liens for 212 Gillespie Street, parcel number 1180-0-0-018.00 on North Long Street, parcel number 1180-0-0-018.11, 203 Ware Street, parcel number 1180-0-0-182-00, and 307 West Main Street, parcel number 1180-0-0-338.00, as provided in the attachments. Under board business, we have consideration of setting public hearings on the tax mileage and budget for August 19, 2025, and September 2, 2025, for the city of Starkville for fiscal year 2025-26, with adoption scheduled for the September 2, 2025 meeting. Under airport, we have a request approval for four airport board members, operations manager Rusty Bushelon and airport director Rodney Lincoln, to attend the Mississippi Airport Association MAA conference on September 17 through 19, 2025, in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, at a total estimated cost of $3,684. Under community development and planning, we have consideration of reappointing Debbie Nettles to the Historic Preservation Commission. Number two is consideration of calling for two public hearings to amend the Unified Development Code. Under engineering, we have consideration of approving the preliminary engineering services contract with Neil Schaefer, Inc., for the SS4A SR12 Garrett Road Roundabout Project in the hourly not to exceed amount of $959,993.10. Two is consideration of approving change order number one with Burns Dirt Construction for the Cross Gates Sinkhole Repair Project in the amount of $21,325 for additional unforeseen repairs. Number three is consideration of approval of Simmons' Erosion Control, Inc., as the lowest and best bid in the amount of $1,178,403.35 for the Spring Street Connector South Improvements Project, STP-7131-00001, LPA/109583-701000. In accordance with the Mississippi Department of Transportation Local Public Agency Guidelines and Procedures, and authorization for the city engineer and mayor to proceed with contract execution pending MDOT review and concurrence. Under human resources, we have request authorization to hire Samuel Fisher as a part-time line aircraft lineman, FBO, in the Starkville Airport Department. Two is request authorization to hire Ada Thurman as a permit services technician for the Community Development Department. Three is request authorization to hire Isaac Fenton as a water technician for the Utilities Department. And here's one I'll pause for a moment because we have promotions, and the gentlemen who are getting promoted are in the audience. And so when I say request approval of the promotions of Matthew Davis to the rank of captain, and there is Mr. Davis, and Scotty Carruthers to the rank of lieutenant, Robert E. Gears, and Parker Medine to the rank of sergeant, congratulations. And I get to finish the thing. This is, "And retain candidates from the promotions process held in July 2025 for consideration to fill any additional vacant position due to retirements, terminations, or approved additions to the police department within a period of 12 months in the Starkville Police Department." Under police, we have consideration of the approval to accept the 100% reimbursable fiscal year 26 alcohol impaired driving enforcement grant in the amount of $126,917.54. B is consideration of the approval to accept the 100% reimbursable fiscal year 25 402 police traffic services grant in the amount of $24,257. C is request authorization to trade 60 Glock 17 with three magazines and the police department's inventory of abandoned property and to purchase 60 Glock 47 MOS fixed with three magazines from the Southern Connection, the only Glock dealership in the state, for a total cost of $3,439.40, and to remove from the city inventory the list of officers, Glocks, and abandoned property being traded in. D is request approval to extend the services with LexisNexus Risk Solutions to provide Starkville Police Department with access to the Accurate Track Services at an annual subscription fee of $5,100 beginning September 1, 2025, automatically renewed with a 5% increase each year unless a written notice of termination is issued by either party. Still, under police, we have item E, which is request approval to enter in a non-compensated special investigator contract under Mississippi Code Section 41-29-112 between the Mississippi Bureau of Narcotics, MBN, investigator Michael McLendon, and Starkville Police Department. Under code enforcement, we have, under Mississippi Code Annotated 21 1911 Sub 2, and as adopted by the city of Starkville Board of Alderman, the following properties are found in violation of said ordinance and are in such a state of uncleanliness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community and are therefore placed on the property mowing list. 21 Bent Brook Ridge Street, 704 Cypress Road, 107 Eckford Drive, 518 Sycamore Street, 102 Raymond Street, 1704 Douglas MacArthur Drive, and 711 Sassifras Drive. Under utilities, we have consideration of the acceptance of the audited financial statements of the Starkville Electric Department for the 15-month period ended September 30, 2024, as presented by Watkins Ward and Stafford CPA's PLLC. Number two is consideration of approval of the change order number one with hemp hill construction for ditch alternate sludge removal for the Ernest E. Jones Wastewater Treatment Plant Aeration Improvements Project. Three is consideration of accepting the sole source quote from Wesco Annexter, Inc., for 1,000 V4 water modules in the amount of $162,460 in that they are compatible with the existing mirrors. Four is consideration of engaging Neil Schaefer to perform archaeological and environmental studies for the city of Starkville Stark Road Wastewater Rehabilitation Project, grant number ARC-MS-22235. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, ma'am.
Certainly, I'm happy to do that. Next, we move to announcements and comments. Under mayor's comments, I'm going to do a little highlight here. We'll do a little promo because starting at 6 o'clock tonight, we have National Night Out, which is at the Starkville Sports Plex, and it goes from 6 until 9. And I believe there are hot air balloons, there's food, there's all kinds of vendors out there. So those who are going to join us, I believe we'll probably, some of us will go out there for this after that, but it's always a good time and it's, and it certainly represents the community very well. So I would encourage anyone who is listening and has an interest to go on out there, 405 Lynn Lane at the sportsplex. So, and I have no other comments than that because there's one that's going to come up that I would have taken, but we'll let Mr. Brooks do that one. Alderman Warland, anything?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Sistrunk?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Skinner?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
Well, I'm gonna take, I don't want to take your thunder.
Not at all. Your thunder, all of it.
As you've heard me say before, this time of year, the Sturgis Bike Rally is next week, and I'm on the committee. We, the committee's been meeting since January, trying to get everything planned, make it, you know, even better than last year. It actually kicks off on Thursday night with a cruise in, a car show, bike show, truck show. It's free, you know, it's in the park over there. You gotta have an armband, $10 armband to get in, but the registration's free. If you're able in here or listening, you know, has a car or something, they're proud of it, truck, bike, you know, you're welcome to bring it over there. And that's at 6. It starts at 6, and then there's a local band, the Full Circle Party Band, I always have trouble saying that, the Full Circle Party Band, starts at 7. And they're really good. I know some of those guys, they do a good job. That, that kicks off Thursday night. Friday, things will be going on all in the park. And then Saturday is, is the big day, of course, with, with all the biker games. Some of the highlights this year, they're, they're actually giving a motorcycle away, Harley, one of two, it'll be, I think it's a Low Rider or a Fat Bob, one or the other. Tickets are $35, and you can buy as many as you want, but they'll, they're gonna give that away. Of course, the dinner ride's always a highlight, and it, and it is coming through Starkville. Chief Baller's laid us out a route this year, a little bit difficult because of Main Street and 182, but we'll be coming through Greensboro Street and Russell Street and back on 12, you know, out at the university. And I'd love to have a bunch of folks out and watch the motorcycles. We, I think we had almost 150 in that ride last year. And then, again, that's one of the highlights. They'll have a poker run, those of you that, that motorcycles like, and understand what that is. That's a fundraiser for the Alzheimer's organization. They've moved everything, pretty much everything into the park this year. An armband's $20 to get in, kids are free, but having that, have to have an adult. But, but that $20 is good for, you know, from Thursday through Friday, and bands, Friday night and Saturday night. Band U.S. is the highlight band Friday night, and then the Garrett Oshawalt Band's playing too, and it's a local band. So we would, I would encourage everyone, if you have anything, you know, if you can, come by and, and check that thing out. It, it's in Sturgis, of course, but it, it benefits everybody around here. Starkville, I mentioned, the, the dinner ride, the Vintage Cycle Center is actually, is the sponsor for the, for the dinner, the dinner, of the dinner ride. Starkville's affected, the poker run goes through Ackerman, Uphora, Mathston, Maven, you know, those local communities are affected, and then the dinner ride ends up going back through Lewisville. So all the communities around here benefit from this, and, and, you know, people would stay and, and, and hotels and eat and spend their money. So we're looking forward to that. But it's Thursday through Sunday of next week, and we would encourage everyone, if they could, to come out and check out the Sturgis Bike Rally.
And the bike ride usually comes to Starkville around 4:30, is that right?
That's about 4, 24, 35, that's about.
Okay, all right. So they, they tend to leave, and then we'll, we'll see about 15, 20, 30 minutes later?
That's about right, yeah.
Okay, cool. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Very briefly, ma'am, thank you, ma'am, for the recognition. Just want to make a few comments, ma'am. I don't seek the recognition as much as I used to in the past, but I'll take this opportunity to our distinguished mayor, distinguished colleagues, department heads, the members of the public, and all those who are zooming in. I just would like to take this opportunity to say thanks to the mayor and to this board for its immaculate work as it relates to McKee Park. I was very impressed with my first appearance there on Friday since the construction had begun. This is a place that we can all be proud of. There was great community presence. There were representatives from different organizations, the Rotary. There was a lot of excitement and enthusiasm in there. This city is growing enormously. It has come a long ways since Mr. Johnson, since 1993. There have been remarkable changes. Have not seen this many chief ballot just after each other during my 30 years. Even it, it, my wife, who, I must say this, gentlemen, from seven, my wife, who rarely gets out, she was just moved by the news that she had heard about this renovated park. So she made a very rare appearance. So we have a lot to be proud of, as the minister preached so fervently on Friday about the kiss, the music, the atmosphere. Starkville is certainly moving progressively forward. We are setting high marks, high standards. And if you leave it to the vice mayor, I would say we are the leading municipality in this great magnolia state of Mississippi. People are going to be coming to our parks. We not only have the McKee Park, but we have invested very wisely, very conservatively, hard-earned taxpayers' dollars to bring about a different landscape here. We are the home of the greatest university in the southeastern conference. And Dr. Kenham, who is the, the leader of this university, has a very profound appearance in and out of City Hall. His presence does not go unnoticed. He gave some very great remarks at the ribbon cutting and brought along some of his staff, the former WCBI journalist, the, the Ms. Andrea Self was present, among other dignitaries. And Dr. Kenham is in and out of City Hall, and he's a great partner together with Mississippi State University. He was here at our swearing in on the first day of July 2025, and he paid close attention to details. And he recognizes the contribution that all of us make individually and collectively. And, ma'am, I must say, without getting into too much of that, when I checked my mail on late Friday, ma'am, I get this long envelope, probably about 10 by 15 size. I say, from the president office. I said, let me open this with, with all deliberate speed. And I opened that, and Dr. Kenham had two things in there. He had one was a laminated article of the copy of the article that featured me in the Starkville Daily News, the Weekend Edition, the combined Saturday and Sunday paper on July 12, 2025. And then he had a letter in there recognizing my contribution. But also included in that letter, when you read it very carefully, he talks about how you and your colleagues, how you are, are keeping our city very safe, key word, keeping it very safe, very welcoming, and very successful to all of those who are fortunate enough to call it home. You know, that is a real leader. He has such a great air by himself, such distinguished personality. So I know when he and his entourage came here to address our board in a, in a session one night, I said, Dr. Kim, you have made my night. I mean, you gonna bring your entourage from Mississippi State University? So, ma'am, I sent these things because I wanted just to highlight these things publicly. I've shared this with the board privately and individually, but the public needs to know. And I just want to also, ma'am, I'm from old school. My, my parents also always taught me, say yes, ma'am, and no, ma'am, and thank you. So I want to thank, I'll make sure that I say thank you again, ma'am, for all that you do, you and this board, Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Sistrunk, and all the others that you do to support me. And let me say, as I get ready to close, ma'am, here, as we proceed with this, and our thoughts about getting ready for Friday, for the, for the budget session, Alderman Police Chief, and I'm gonna zoom in on you just a minute, if you allow me, it's all good. And, and this is your night I'm gonna zoom in on it. And, and a key thing that Dr. Kenham said, that we're keeping this community safe, two points. And want to thank the mayor, the budget chair in this board for providing the 20 cameras. And I understand that they all, Mr. Clemm has been up and deployed, except the last five, which is ready for deployment. Our vice mayor keeps up with what's going on. And we hopefully get 20 more. And, but let me close on this note, ma'am, and it's gonna be a very positive note. And, Chief, we brought in this additional territory, Mr. Police Chief, in 2022. And, and you have 75 authorized positions. Let me, about three minutes or less remaining. So you remember here when, in, on September the 27th of 2022, when WTVA was out front, and Craig Ford was asking me about what's the greatest accomplishment that I've witnessed in my 30 years? And you remember me telling him, I said, well, I said, my focal point tonight is law enforcement. I told him that's the primary concern. And it was a great news story, and I mentioned to him, Chief, you had an entourage of people here, the mayor allowed me to be there in her absence. And I said that your department in our community has a mindset that we have a zero tolerance for crime. So as we continue to move forward to Friday, I'm, I'm thinking about it very continuously, my, I want to say to you, Chief, you're doing an excellent job. Your team is doing an excellent job. You're keeping our community safe. My top priority, I'll make sure the record is clear, within the existing stream of revenue, is the key priority, the key focal point for this upcoming budget year. This is my main priority for, for Friday and through the voting on this budget, is law enforcement. We must keep this community safe. We must keep it safe. And, Chief, I know you said you have 75 authorized positions, but you're gonna have my full support to get where we can. I don't know what's gonna happen with, with my other six colleagues and the mayor, but, you know, we respect each other, we work well together. But this is gonna be my top, my main priority, over anything else you can think of. Raises, law enforcement, anything else you can think about, that's the priority. So I just wanted you to know that. You have my support, and a lot of things happening in this city. You get called on all the time, and these youngsters, you, we see the news. I mean, they, they think guns are the order of the day. And you and your team are very professional. I appreciate your, your professionalism on the job and off the job. That is greatly appreciated. Gentlemen, congratulations to you. And I, and I know about your backgrounds, you, you're a great additions to the work, to the department. And you represent our city well. You're gonna continue to provide us excellent leadership. And thank you for all that you do. And, ma'am, I just took these, this rare opportunity. I don't seek the floor much, but I just felt compelled to say that. Ma'am, I want to thank you for your leadership, and thank you for recognizing, Vice Mayor, and allowing me to say these things. Aye, yeeo. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Vaughn?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. Good evening again to you, everyone. Chief, ma'am, who a job is to control this traffic on 182? Is it the school or is our job to control this traffic? This traffic during school hours is, is outrageous. I'm tired of phone calls, but I had to answer them because it's a part of my work. We have so much backup, so what are we, who is the job to control it?
It's a combination, Vice, Alderman Vaughn, but I will let the chief address this because I think they share it with the school law enforcement officers. So, Chief, if you would, share that plan?
Yes, sir. And you're correct. It's absolute physics. It's worse than game day operations and trying to get so many people through a very small channel. Here's the latest solution, and I hope that the media picks this up. And, and we've been working with the school authorities. They have a drop-off point now, Bridge Point, for parents, where they're now shuttling buses for the pickup, to save the parents from having to get caught into the traffic. That is very, very one lane, thin lane, very hard to get the population that we're trying to serve there. This just began on Monday. The feedback Monday and yesterday was that it is working a little, it is providing relief. We hope that the parents continue to gravitate to that, to where the number of buses will pick up on the shuttle. And of course, they're gonna be taking the buses up on hospital and around the, the longer way, but the commitment there is as strong. And it's been a combination of SROs, police officers, and the frustrating thing is, we get it. And, and at the end of the day, if we could, if we could rebuild it or to reroute it for a nighttime construction, we would, but we can't. It's beyond our authority there. And we're doing everything we can. We feel the frustration, we know it. And, and our own wives and family are caught up in that traffic too, and probably the loudest voices. So, yes, sir, we respect that, and we're doing everything we know to try to reroute that traffic or get the drop-off points. But again, thankful for... But again, thankful for Bridgepoint Church allowing that drop-off and allowing the schools to be able to pick it up. So the solution, we feel is there until we can get past those avenues to open up that traffic.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, you and your staff, for what all y'all doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know it's tough out there.
Anything else, Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Aye, yeh.
Thank you so much. All right, next we'll move to citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to have three minutes to share your thoughts, concerns, we'll take compliments as well. Mr. Turner, always nice to see you.
All right. Good evening, my name is Abbott Tunnel Ward Seven. All right, to the mayor, to the police chief, to the fire chief, to sanitation. A citizen has a few concerns, but first I'd like to make an announcement on August seventeen. Brother Fabley will do his first sermon at three o'clock at Beth's Abbey Baptist Church. And we are blessed that we have evil lurking everywhere, at least we got police already at church, and that makes us feel a little safe that we have chief, captain Nicholas Bally, and that makes us safe, but if the chief cannot help other churches, because evil is, if they're not being structured on one end, they're being structured on another. Also, the people are concerned about that with the construction, for now, we probably won't have a cricket parade this year, and they're concerned about if someone gets sick, how the first responders will get to them, and they're also concerned about the MSU home games.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else under citizens' comments? Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close it for citizens' comments. Next item we have is public appearance, we have Mr. Daniels, but I believe Mr. Johnson is going to take his place.
We didn't get to debate it, but I yield my vote.
Okay, all right, well, you have ten minutes, and if you have a presentation to make, feel free to do so. I don't know if you have any handouts or anything.
I don't, I don't have any handouts.
You have ten minutes, and Ms. Harden will time.
Well, thank you. I don't think it'll take me ten minutes, but Mayor and board, I'm coming to y'all tonight, most of you know what I do, but tonight I'm coming at you with a different hat. I'm president of Trim Cane Water Association, and I'm coming to you tonight with the concern that I think that y'all would come before me if you were going to get a seventy-three percent rate in your water and a thirteen-hundred percent rate on your water meter. Trim Cane and the city has had a long, long relationship since the nineteen seventies, and the reason that Trim Cane started buying water from the city was because when the city dug a well, their well was a hundred and fifty feet lower than our well was. So when they put the well in line, it sucked our well dry in the nineteen seventies. And so the city started selling Trim Cane water in the seventies. But we've had a real strong relationship, and the reason that I'm here, I don't know that I can represent what needs to be said in ten minutes when you look at all of the things that Trim Cane and the city's done. And what I would like to do, instead of airing everything out tonight, is request a meeting, a working meeting, when y'all have one of your working sessions, so we can do a history and let the board know exactly what Trim Cane has done for the city, from given certificated area, from Reed Road to the city limits, we didn't, y'all didn't buy that, we gave to you. You know, so I'd like for those type things to be in consideration when you look at a seventy-three percent rate increase. What would your citizens do with a seventy-three percent? I just want to sit down and go over everything that we have done to help the city, because it's been a, it's been a, what, fifty-year relationship, and I don't think all of the variables were talked about when this rate increase was implemented. So that's what I'm asking the board to do tonight, is let myself and Diddy come to a working session to lay it all out for y'all.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you so much. All right, next item is a public hearing. Let's see, is it lieutenant now? Congratulations again. I believe we said yes to that, so wear pride.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Alderman. Come for you tonight to present a public hearing, twenty-one nineteen eleven, for dilapidated structure on address of two oh seven and a half McKinley Street, Starkville, Mississippi, three nine seven five nine, parcel number one oh two B dash zero zero dash zero four zero point zero zero. Tax documents show that property belongs to a Virginia, a Logan, at that address. On June twentieth, twenty twenty-five, I initiated an initial inspection at this address. Photos were taken from public view from the road. As you can see, the gable vent, the slats were broken in that, and the wall was beginning to rot at the bottom. That was what you could see from the road. Notice the violation was mailed to the property owner on June twenty-sixth. Public hearing notice was mailed to the property owner on July the eighteenth. July the eighteenth, public hearing notice was posted on the property and at City Hall. Administrative inspection warrant signed by Judge Kelly on July the eighteenth, and was executed by myself and building official Steve McMullin on July the eighteenth. As you can see, these are other photos from that day. You want me to see it later, but right here, this is a broken, or excuse me, a hole in the ceiling. Not the best picture I could get of it. And the slats, and there's that hole again. This is what we couldn't see from the road. This is the back of the house, where you can see, of course, considerable damage to the roof and to the wall itself. And you can see up into the house, through the wall. This, again, this limb is actually going into the roof, that has punctured the roof, and this is where you can see through the wall, looking up next to the electric meter. August the fourth, I conducted a reinspection of the property. The only difference was it showed that the yard had been mowed, but there was no changes to the house itself.
All right, and is anyone residing there?
No, ma'am. I spoke with the property owner's daughter, who said that they had removed her mother from the property due to the condition of the house.
Any questions of the citizens? Anyone? No? All right, I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter regarding the twenty-one nineteen eleven determination for two oh seven and a half McKinley Street? Now would be the time. Is this your property, ma'am?
It's my mother's property.
Would you like to come up and speak to the board?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Elaine Logan. I am the daughter of Virginia Logan and my sister Cynthia Logan. My mother couldn't be here today due to her health. I did talk to the officer on the phone, and he did inform me of the house, and we knew about the condition of the house. We do keep the yard mowed, but the house, it is, it's not repairable from the pictures. We didn't know it was that bad. Thank you for showing us that. Repairable, we was going to repair the house, but it doesn't seem like it can be. So we're stuck in between a rock and a hard place right now, because if we tear the house, the structure down, according to the code, we cannot rebuild it because of the parcels are too close. Is that correct, or have that changed?
I do not know. Mr. Havlin, are you familiar with this at all?
I'm not.
Okay, and you found that out from?
Well, I'm basing that on the fact that another house that was in front of the house couldn't be rebuilt because they told that landowner that they couldn't rebuild because the parcels were too close.
Okay.
The reason why is two oh seven and a half is because it's half of, it's half of the whole yard. It's two oh seven that was in front of us, then two oh seven is in the back. So my mother doesn't own the entire viewing that you just saw, she just owns what the house is on and then the east way.
Okay, well, we're not in a position to let it stay that way, so we have, we have in the past allowed the fire department, for example, to burn the house, which, of course, takes care of it not being dilapidated in that sense, it then becomes something that has to be cleaned up. But the house is gonna need to come down, just in terms of the twenty-one nineteen eleven, if this board so finds. So I don't know, beyond that, what would you be asking, asking the board?
Actually, we were gonna, that's what I need to ask, boy, can we rebuild the house if we tear, if the structure is torn down?
Okay, I don't have that answer, and I don't know how to do that without Mr. Havlin taking a look at the lot and the code that addresses the lot at that point in time. While I have you here, any questions from the board at this point? Mr. Havlin, can you pull that up? I think you may be trying to do that.
Yeah.
Give us just a minute, and we'll see what we can, see if we can find something really quickly to respond to the.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Alderman Vaughn.
Ms. Logan, do it still flood in that area every time?
Yes, it does. And that, it has not been actually cleaned since Rob Robertson was on this board, and you know how to run a long mess, ma'am.
Is it in a floodplain?
That's what I've mixed course enough and asked.
Well, I see, I see Mr. Burnett looking over Mr. Havlin's shoulder, so maybe we'll get a quick response.
It floods the lot.
And that started, that's the problem, that, because if we rebuild, it's gonna do it over again.
Well, if it's in a floodplain, you probably are not gonna be in a good position to rebuild, but you know, if there are other issues associated with the size of the lot and what you can build on that lot, you may not be able to build something of the same size.
There's a ditch that runs beside the house that needs to be cleaned.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, rather than, rather than hold you here, shall we, Mr. Havlin, did you find something?
Probably better to change, I'm visiting the block.
Okay, all right.
About this lot, I'm happy.
Okay, all right, why don't, why don't we do that? If you would plan to go to upstairs, visit the building department, and we can see Mr. Havlin, the gentleman in the back, and then Mr. Burnett, who'll be able to look and see the status of the floodplain, floodway, whatever it might be, maybe we'll give you a better idea of what you could potentially do with it. But in the meantime, it cannot stay the way it is in terms of being a hazard to the neighborhood. So let me see if there's anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter as a part of the public hearing. So if you would, if you'd step back, I'll see if anyone else wishes to speak to this particular matter as it relates to two oh seven and a half McKinley, either for or against finding it as a twenty-one nineteen eleven. All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Alderman Vaughn.
Mayor, if she, if she can get, if she get her answer, she need to come back so we can direct her which way she need to go, or she gonna allow the fire department burning down, and we clean it up and do all that, but we would need her to come back and give her directions after she meet with Mr. Havlin.
Okay, all right. Well, and that being the case, we don't have to have another public hearing on it, but we can, we can put it back on the agenda for reconsideration. Anyone else, any other comments? All right, do you want, you want to table this, have a motion to table this until the next board meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I have a motion to table this particular item until the next board meeting. Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Alderman Moreland, second from Alderman Moreland. Any other discussion about it? And you understand, you need to, you need to visit with the Community Development Department, so when it comes back to the next board meeting, which would be August the nineteenth, we'll be able to provide you some information on what we can do, okay, what needs to be done. All right, okay, thank you. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, and those two gentlemen in the back, right there, are the ones who'll be able to help you. All right, that takes us to the claims docket. Do you have a motion for the claims docket?
Same, aye.
I have a motion from Alderman Moreland, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks. No discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. And coming to the last item under HR, we have item five, which is a consideration of disciplinary action recommended by Sanitation Environmental Services Director Chris Smiley as a result of I A number oh seven one oh two oh two five for a sanitation environmental services employee. Any discussion on this matter? Vice Mayor Perkins.
Mayor, just one sentence, and for purpose of the record, I would like for the record to reflect that I'm voting nay, because it is my opinion that termination is appropriate discipline. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other, any other discussion? All right, I need a motion, please.
Move approval of the disciplinary action recommended by the department head.
Okay, I have a second from Alderman Brooks. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And the motion carries. And that takes us to a closed termination session to determine the need for executive session. Do I have a motion to go into?
To approve.
I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you would clear the room, we're going to be going into a closed determination session to determine the need for an executive session. Thank you, everyone.
All right, in executive session, the board voted to authorize the city attorney to take legal action as it relates to the East October Hollow wastewater district. And they gave the mayor the authority to negotiate with Trim Kane regarding water contract. And I need a -- whoa, wait a minute, let me read my work session. In accordance with the notice as required under Mississippi Code 254113, the board will have a work session Friday the 15th of August 2025 at 11:00. The meeting will be held at City Hall on the second floor conference room located at 110 West Main. Notes should be provided to this work session within one hour of this meeting by posting such notes at City Hall. The notice for the work session should be made a part of the minutes of the board meeting. It will be an open public meeting. The city of Starkville and the public and press are invited to attend. We also will be having a work session which has been posted by Ms. Harden for the budget work session this coming Friday at 11 o'clock. There will be -- lunch will be served. All right, I need a motion to recess, please. All right, Alderman Vone, thank you, do you have a second? Alden Brooks, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right, thank you, we are in recess. Thank you, everyone, a national night out.